You are unmuted, Madam Chair.
Very much.
Into the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, that will be just as far off.
Does everyone have a chance to move on? I'll make any changes to the minutes from our meeting, you know, dated August 29th. And please can I have a motion to approve this?
Sure, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of August 29th, 23rd.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hello, everybody that's up there, nice to see you. Anyone receive any correspondence or community?
Answer no.
I have not, no, I have not, I have not either.
Madam Chair, if I may, the, I have had communication from a parent about the morning buses. And obviously, I also mentioned the buses that have been showing up in a timely fashion at the Swan Scott Middle School. So a parent told me that there is confusion in the morning. One bus has everyone on it and then the other bus is empty. So I communicated with the new operations manager at the Hilly Bus Company and she spoke with the bus drivers and said, literally, that students are purposefully not getting on one of the bus so they could be together. And whether they all want to get to the middle school together, they all wanted to delay getting on the bus and have more time together. So starting yesterday, the buses in the morning that are going around town basically at the same time, a couple of minutes early, are waiting here at the middle school together so that the bus drivers break up the students into relatively equal numbers. They don't have to be exactly equal, but so I mean literally for the first week of the school year, it's interesting, we never had this issue before. For, let me say, never heard of it before, one of the buses was empty and one was overloaded.
Yes, I, I will say there was always one bus that was significantly more crowded than the others I had heard. I didn't know that the other ones were empty. But so when you say they're waiting, they're waiting at the elementary school here.
They're waiting here at the Johnson School, yes, today when I came in, I came in early just to make sure, and yes, the buses did wait together. One was in the front of the school, one was at Flash Road and then drove around and got behind the other bus and then, I'm, I'm not sure how the students decide which bus to get on, but the bus drivers have the responsibility of making sure that none of the buses are overloaded, let's put it that way.
But so were they, but when we got the bus schedule, it was at certain time? And so it sounds like the concern is that the times have changed and that hasn't been.
The buses were two minutes apart.
Yeah. But I think of the timing that they're going around, it's like probably it's different.
Yes. And so people are. So particularly for us this morning, like this is my input, not community input. Like I, my son was there 10 minutes early and within two minutes of the time expected to the bus to come. He said that he got a call from another friend that the bus had already passed our police station, which is an hour bus from him. So my concern was, oh my goodness, okay, so we hopped in the car to try to get to the next, to the last stop, which would have been on the hot road. And there was no bus there. So I don't know how that happened, I don't know how it was so early, but it was not there at 7:29 and it, and he was there early.
Yeah, I think that's a time, because they're doing this thing together, I think the tricky thing is that the times are different by like.
I was told it this morning by the.
That they were the same.
That they were not. My assumption is.
Maybe the bus was full and that's why it passed.
The, the bus shouldn't go by any bus stop. You know, I'll, I'll talk to them again. Are you sure that was the last bus? You sure there wasn't a bus coming?
That's right, so I'm not sure about that.
I bet there was another bus coming.
And he could have maybe waited. But I think what happened was that 7:29 bus, he assumed it was coming, which he was early for and never came, so then I think he thought, I missed the bus. And I didn't think to think, oh, we should wait. Because I just then went to the next stop. So, okay, okay.
So I'll check again to make sure that, I was told, because I asked that, I, I had this huge conversation about.
This is so confusing.
How do we have to change the, the morning schedule? And the operation manager said, no, if we have the two buses leave Johnson School at the same time, then we won't have to change any of the schedules, because here they were, I think there were two minute difference. At, at the Johnson School, I think one was 31 and one was 32 maybe or, or something. So I'll keep working on it. The afternoon issue has theoretically been solved. They have reversed the pickup between the high school and the middle school so that the buses are leaving at a much more comfortable time. And I spoke to Jason Cow, Cowman today and he did not mention an issue and I'm sure he would have. So I think the afternoon has been solved.
Okay.
So now we'll work, I'll, I'll speak to the burger again, make sure that everyone's meeting the schedule. I did make sure everyone had that schedule. Sometimes people think they know the schedule. So last week I sent everybody involved, the high school principal, all the secretaries, I sent Mr. Andrews' copy, our, our administrative assistants, obviously the bus company, and I said, one needs to change, and the response was nothing. So I'll double check.
Okay, because what I can, I guess, can I ask you a question? I, I'm sorry that this is driving me up, but I'd like, so if the expectation for a particular bus stop was 7:29 and the bus was early, from what I could tell, it would have been bad tides as the last stop. But would you mean the last bus, wouldn't have that been the last time to get the bus? Like if.
There are three buses.
Right, but.
Is 7:29 at your pickup the third bus?
Yes.
We only have one bus that's around for us, so you know, if, if we miss it, but a couple of times in the morning and it comes early, even just by like, so it, you know, they were out there. Early, five minutes early, which it says that's where you need to be, so five minutes early and then the bus was still early and they ran to it.
Right, and Connor.
What was that last part?
They ran to it, like they ran to the bus.
Okay, so I will, I will communicate to the operations manager, who's new, and had a family issue right before the school year started that covered the first two or three days of school, but she's back now. That if a bus is early at a bus stop, they are.
Yeah, right.
Till the appointed time.
Yes, that's what, that's really what needs to happen, because I think for certain stops, that's the only stop we, like that's the only stuff we have. And that's the last bus. And he was there 10 minutes.
Okay, well then there's no, absolutely no.
If it was, if it was one day, Monday?
Yesterday?
Monday, yeah.
Yesterday the bus was very late.
Yeah, right, which is the other thing we heard. And you're just still figuring it out.
And if I could chime in as well, as a outside party, is that possible?
Yes, if you could state your name and address.
Jenny Lau, 25 Baker Road. I, so it seems like there's a, a common pattern and I get what you're saying, Mr. Parentazi, but I do think that there, the bus drivers have not sticked to the schedule, so there's something going on on that end. Just reports from fellow moms and things that just aren't adding up. So I think there are probably two different things going on. We need to look at where the buses are stopping, but more importantly, what's happening this year, right now, where they're stopping. I'm not sure that anyone's looked at it in detail.
May I ask a question, Madam Chair? Jen, are you suggesting or stating that they're not stopping at the appointed stop they're supposed to be stopping at?
Correct, so we're in Little Nahant and it's, I'm not gonna lie, it's not a disadvantage that the buses are willing to stop here at will, but what happens is whatever bus comes through Nahant first picks up every little Nahant kid. And then they take off and then the other buses are, you know, filling the kids. So I think there are two separate issues. The bus company is not on schedule, right? So I'm not, that is difficult for me to reconcile that you are at the school, you saw the buses, they, so maybe they're trying to get their groove, I'm not sure. But that doesn't make sense with what I'm hearing from other moms, which is that they're not showing up this morning. There was another case last week where a mom was waiting 20 minutes and the bus finally showed up. So it's not adding up, so I think we need to investigate it a little bit further.
I will do that, as a matter of fact, I will do it before the meeting's over, I'm typing an email now.
Thank you.
And I apologize, Jen, for any inconvenience, obviously. I was here this morning purposely before, it was definitely before 7:15, it could have been 7:10, and both, and there were two buses here at the Johnson School. So why they would be late, obviously I don't know how accurate they are to the stops, but I'll find out and we'll correct it and I apologize to everyone.
There's no need to apologize, I think that it's just about all of us connecting, communicating. There are lots of pieces to this to make sure that everyone's taken care of and that the kids are, just, it's seamless and so don't apologize.
Thank you.
Okay, I won't.
Are there any comments, any other comments? There are no comments, we'll move on to the examination and the authorization of the books.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet labeled item five, you have the bill roll which totals $44,827.33. And I respectfully asked a member of the school committee to make that motion to approve them. When I'm done, I will go quickly, Amazon is a combination of office supplies and school materials and supplies. That totals $2,207.68, all those small numbers. The Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth is our annual membership that will be paid for by grant. Learning Without Tears is about reading and writing. IXL is our annual license for $2,188. I don't have to explain extermination. Wilson is books. Irving Sons is a plumber, we had two things done. The last time we had an enormous burst of rain, we had some backup. So the first of those two bills is for snaking our main lines out, which had some organic material in them. And the second is putting new seals in the toilets, because when that happened, we found out that some of the toilets didn't even have, you know, that wax seal that goes between the pipe and the toilets. Some of our toilets didn't even have them, so. So we had those installed. Speace Corner is special education supplies, Rochester is reading, RP O'Connor is labor for our temperature control system, which is annual. Obviously Stop &amp; Shop is food service, Folet is books, AT&amp;T is phone, as is Verizon. I have some good news about Verizon for a change.
Just tell them.
I was getting very confused because. The Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth is our annual membership that will be paid for by grant. Um, Learning Without Tears is about reading and writing. Uh, IXL is our annual uh license for twenty-one hundred eighty-eight dollars. I don't have to explain extermination. Wilson is books, uh Irving Suns is a plumber. We had two things done. The last time we had an enormous burst of uh rain. Um, we had some backup, so uh the first of those two uh bills is for snaking our main lines out. Which uh had some uh organic material in them. And uh the second is uh putting new seals in the toilets. Because uh when that happened, we found out that some of the toilets didn't even have, you know, the wax seal that goes between the pipe and the toilets. Some, some of our toilets didn't even have them, so uh. So we had those installed. Um. Uh, speech corner is special education supplies, Rochester is reading. RP O'Connor is labor for our temperature control system, which is annual. Uh, obviously, Stop and Shop is food service, Folet is books, AT&T is phone. Uh, as is Verizon. I have some good news about Verizon for a change.
Just tell them.
I was getting very confused because Verizon kept billing us and saying we didn't pay our bill and then blah, 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 blah. So I did an analysis uh last week of all of our Verizon bills. And it's complex because. Um. We pay Verizon to make a connection with our internet and, you know, it's, it's all over the place. Um, I found that there were two lines that we were being charged for. That we don't believe are being used by anybody in the town. And um. The fire chief and I have searched and searched, so. He is going to turn them off. And um actually, he's gonna do a research project to see what they are. But I think we're paying for two lines that either aren't used at all. Or are being used by someone else. And so uh starting. Now, the, the being used by somebody else is probably inaccurate because I called both of the numbers. And it just rang and rang and rang and rang. So you know, when you went from fiber optic to computerization and, and there, you know. We had dozens of copper lines and so uh the chief and I. Um, Chief Austin and I are, are gonna make a recommendation to Tony Barletta to have an auditor come in. And research all of the copper lines to see, cause there may be dozens of them. And we don't know. I have a picture of the. Phone station at the firehouse. And it's, it's actually hilarious, you know, where there's wires coming in and then jumped and re-jumped and. And uh it really does take a professional to figure it out. Um, Verizon will do it free up into the firehouse's main box. But then once a wa- wire leaves that main box, it's up to the uh the user. So that's why we think we should get somebody to, to not only look at. The firehouse, but also look at the police station and look at, you know, town hall and, and really come here and look at us, maybe we have more. If somebody else is paying for it, I mean, I wouldn't know. So that's a little bit of good luck. To be balanced by the bad luck, that I had to make a, a. Um, repair call to Verizon today because I got a report. That the green box on the corner of Flash Road and uh Castle Road was open and kids were messing around in it. So uh, you know, so we went out, we closed the door, but there's no lock on it. So at eight o'clock tomorrow morning, Verizon's gonna be here and hopefully put a lock on that. So I now know much more about phones than I wanted.
Oh, thank you.
So the next two are our utility bills and it wouldn't be nice if our gas bill was always a hundred ninety dollars uh a month. Uh, school specialty or supplies and materials, uh Justice Resource Institute, that's for a uh special education. Tuition, which includes seven days a week room and board. And we are um going to a meeting uh in two weeks about that student. And I'm challenging the bill. Because it's my understanding that that student is. We, is doing very, very well. Which is great, and is spending two days a week, the weekends. Back at home. So my question is, why are we paying for seven days a week? So I'll be able to hopefully tell you that uh next time. The self-integrity learning solutions is an interesting bill. That's actually half of our internet service bill. Because we pay the other half with the uh federal grant. So this is the net. And that's it.
I can make a motion. Um, I can make a motion for. Our school committee to please approve the total of forty-four thousand. Forty-four thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Can I have a second? One second, um David?
Hi.
Moving on.
Thank you.
To the principal's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to present my report this evening. I believe you have a coffee six A in your packet. Uh, under the area of student families and community, we took part in our September eleventh uh memorial celebrate, uh celebration, commemoration rather. Um, at the firehouse, uh fourth and fifth grade attended. And they appreciated being part of that and uh it was brief but solemn and we're glad to, you know, take part in these types of community events. The Nahant Police Department held a very successful car seat program this week. Uh, they had a grant for free car seats and these were really high quality uh equipment and they offered several of those to. Family members in town and they installed them. They also checked car seats for families that um had them already installed. And that was just one of several of these events they're gonna be doing at the school. This was kind of the dry run, so they have. A nice grant to fund it and uh I think it's a great service. I wanted to let you know that um I was able to meet with the uh fifth grade teacher and Ms. Covis and talk about a K to five buddies program. And um you have a one to four ratio of uh fifth to K, but we're gonna make it work. It's gonna be uh. It's gonna be great, you know, they're gonna have art um activities, uh seasonal activities. I imagine they'll use the cafeteria or bigger spaces. Um, but I can picture, uh, you know, I can picture a fifth grader working with a small group of um of kindergarteners. We wouldn't want either one to miss the opportunity.
Yes.
Um, if, you know, so the fifth grader, the fifth grader may be a sixth grader here next year. And they'll have another set of buddies.
Yeah.
But the kindergartner wouldn't have another opportunity. Uh, and so we wanna make sure the kindergarteners have that opportunity as well.
You'll be on the lookout for any future teaching.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. We know it, it helps the social emotional growth, it helps the fifth graders. Or older students take ownership for their school community and recognize that they're role models. And that's really a big part of the program and um and they, everyone benefits. Um, we uh Veterans Day planning underway. Uh, again, with a smaller fifth grade, we're looking to include the third and the fourth grade and also make it a school-wide assembly. In the past, it's been sixth graders performing for veterans. Uh, the number of veterans is declining and the school would like to see. Uh, the assembly of themselves. And so we've broken up our historic. Assembly and spread it out over several grades. There'll be poetry recitation, song, uh explanation of the holiday. And um, and so we're looking forward to that. We'll also, of course, invite veterans. Uh, NEF had a wonderful fundraiser. I wanna thank them. They raised three thousand dollars at a golf event uh for the music program. And uh NEF and I met with Mr. Bullock as well. They're playing a field trip and some equipment for the music department. And so we're looking at a school-wide field trip, perhaps to North Shore uh Theater.
Oh, that's great.
And uh, yeah, we've gone there in the past. It could be good for a wide grades fan. And so we're looking at a field trip and uh music support.
Oh, good.
You know. Uh, we had a wonderful open house. Uh, it felt like it was uh well-attended. Parents seemed happy about what they heard from teachers. They had a chance to hear myself talk about what new initiatives we have at the school and then visit their classes. And teachers presented twice the same program so that families who had children could see both teachers. Um, our Norman La Liberté exhibit is continuing. Uh, we're gonna have historic society members come to the school to observe the art classes. That is part of that exhibit and as a reminder, the students' artwork will be going to the historic society and be part of. This very special exhibit that's taking place. And we're also looking forward to having some students take field trips to the historic society to see that exhibit for themselves. And then finally, under student families and community, um I was able to attend a, a PBDSS museum meeting over the weekend. They have an opening of a new exhibit. That's featuring artist Michael Afassi and Richard Alexander uh who make origami. And so they'll be coming to the school and doing origami classes with the classes. Uh, and it's actually a math uh workshop. Students might not know that, but uh there's gonna be symmetry and uh fractions involved. And um, and this will be either funded by a Mass Cultural Council event uh grant or a PTO and NEF fundraising. Depending if the grant comes through. I'm gonna be running a grant to have them come out. And again, they are. World-renowned origami artists. They have five books published and they have several works at the PBDSS. So they're really fantastic and they're really um. They're really uh great folks. I've been on the, the board with them, Mr. Afassi, for some time. And I've just gotten to know him and um it's great to have him here. In the area of technology, parent square update, I was able to meet with teachers and talk about the different options that we have in class dojo. We looked at Reminds. And we would like to recommend that uh we have support for parent square. It's um, you know, out of those, the other two I mentioned are no cost, but they really only have one feature, which is texting. Parent square gives, I mentioned before, a phone number to teachers and they can use that to call home, call homes. Uh, during class hours or outside class hours if they like. They can use it to text. I can use it to text. Um, and it has a really, a real lot of great features that we could really take advantage of. It could replace constant contact if you currently pay for, has newsletter templates. Um, good training system and it's also used by Swamp Scott. So my recommendation uh to the superintendent is that we move forward with this program. Um, he was able to negotiate a bit on the price today, as he will. Um, and I don't know if you wanna take it from here, Tony, on that piece?
I would, thank you. So um. Everyone involved thinks parent square is the way to go and um I support that because uh, you know, we're trying to. Take decision-making and make it a collaborative effort. And obviously, as uh members of the school committee uh have mentioned, that if we. Begin uh to use one in earlier grades when parents and get to Swamp Scott. There's not gonna be any transition. So um. Mr. Andrews did the um. Web training with the company and then turned it over to me. So uh they wanted um thirty-six hundred dollars a year. For the uh enhanced version, which we want, and that's. Pretty inclusive. And then the virtual phone, they wanted an additional six hundred dollars a year. And then there's a five hundred dollar setup cost because when you set things up, obviously, it takes time. So that total was thirteen thousand one hundred dollars. Uh, today I called one of the sales managers and I said, come on, we're really small. So uh she spoke with her boss and uh I got a quote now for eleven thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, and that's for three years.
Same.
So um. Hmm. I don't believe you have to approve it because it's simply an expenditure and it's administrative, but obviously we wanted to talk to you. Before spending that kind of money. So if you support that, um, then next meeting, I will have a, an invoice for you.
Okay.
To approve.
I support it, yeah.
I support it.
That's great, absolutely. How soon could we have?
We're looking at November-ish, uh because there has to be training, obviously, we have to communicate it to the parents. Um. We have to develop with the company an online or text training. We don't, obviously, we don't want too many committee's parents say, you gotta come to this training. We wanted to send the training to them. So it'll take a while. It'll all also take a while to interface with our student support. And student information systems, so it will take a while. Um. But we're excited about it. I mean, it's just gonna make communication so much easier.
Great.
And I know those of you who have been using Parent Square have reported very positive things.
Yeah. Absolutely.
They said three to five weeks um to onboard us and, you know, however long the training takes us. We have November first um outlined for one of the trainings for staff. And we could also have an evening training at parent teacher conference evening. That would be helpful. Um. We also are moving forward with the parent portal and report cards, recognizing that. Um, we, one thing that Parents Square, I'm not sure if it does, it may not pull up attendance from Schoolbrains. Um, and Schoolbrains is still our student database. And so we wanna move forward with the parent portal. As an option for parents to correct their own cellphone number, uh though having to call the office. Um, see report cards and check on attendance. So we are gonna be this week sending out. An email to parents with their e- logging credential. Uh, so that they can log into the parent portal on Schoolbrains and see what that looks like. And we expect that the first trimester report card will be published there. Um, and the last trimester report cards are already there. So we've gotten those report cards up and um then I'll also be presenting the concept of using. The grade book and discussing with teachers whether they wanna use grade book in the parent portal, so they could see, you could see quarterly. Uh, tests, quizzes, things like that.
Madam Chair, if I may, um confidentiality of student information is crucial. Uh, so thi- this will have to be done in multiple steps. Parents will have to be informed that we're gonna be doing it. Then each parent will have to get a unique. Si- identifier. That only they can use. We have to caution them, don't give it to anybody. Because if you do, then your student information, which involves. A lot of things that nobody wants anywhere other than in a very small, like for example, I won't have it. As, as a classic example. So um it will take us some time and multiple steps to get uh the portal functioning. Once it does. Um, it'll be very convenient for parents to use and to get a lot of information and uh and obviously. You know, when you combine the last two things we've talked about, we're really improving communication tremendously. Uh, in a very short period of time.
Uh, I was able to get out a student directory to parents. This was a simple list of uh parents' names, phone numbers and addresses for folks who did not opt out. As I mentioned in my email, schools can make a directory of basic contact information without permission. But out of, you know, being extra cautious, I want to make folks have, give folks the option to opt out. And we just had two families who opted out using my Google form. Um, but after I took them off of the list. I sent out the information to the classes. Uh, I did re- keep the first name of the student on the list, if they were using it as a Valentine's list or a birthday list. But it's only the first name of the student, doesn't have any other information. So I thought that family doesn't wanna be excluded from anything. Um, they would have to go find that information elsewhere. Um, and I only received two corrections to do over the weekend. And nobody said, geez, I missed the opt-out, why did you do this? So that was my concern and that's why I haven't done it for years. I've been able to do it and I'm thinking, oh, I wanna do it, but then. You just get antsy thinking, do these people really? Want to be part of it or do they miss an email? And nobody said they missed an email and so far everyone said, thank you so much for doing it.
Yeah, it's useful.
Yeah, as a way to parent-to-parent communication. So if you're in grade K, you'll only get the grade K info. If you're in grade one, you only get the one info. If you have a one and a three, you get both. Teachers got everything, so I also made a spreadsheet that just had the whole school, all the grades, even the ones that opted out. I highlighted the ones that opted out. I said, teachers, don't share this. This is just for your convenience. I find it more convenient than trying to go onto Schoolbrains on my phone. I pull up this file and actually use it on the computer now, not on Schoolbrains, cause you don't have to go through different screens. You can just jump right to that. Uh, spreadsheet. And so I hope you're finding it helpful and again, it's a, a way for us to use technology to help uh people communicate more uh easily. In the area of curriculum instruction, um I-ready, um we had a meeting about this on September eleventh on our PD day. And teachers and I met together to talk about when we should do the I-ready for the reading assessments. It's gonna be done before the first report card and before the second report card. And then we'll have our conferences about the results at our first report card conference and at our second report card conference. Uh, there's a lot of nuance. There's a lot of things to consider when you look at a computer assessment that was given to a kindergartner for a first grader. Uh, so we thought it would be best if we were there to explain the results and, and see what we saw. Um, and also teachers can also give context about other results that they've used uh to assess reading. But those, that's gonna be our state reading assessment uh for this school year. And we're also talking about, a couple of the teachers are interested in still using DIBELS. Which is another reading assessment that the state says has their full backing. And so they are interested in that and we're in discuss, in discussion with um those two teachers who are interested in doing it a little bit of a different way. Um, and so then we talked about the timeline and the teachers helped set the timeline of the teach, yeah, we did a collaborative. Our professional development day, September eleventh, that was our early release day. Uh, we started, instead of having a lunch break, we actually moved things around a bit. Um, and I went over teacher, the new teacher evaluation tool, which uh the superintendent, myself and the uh NT. Um, and I went over teacher, the new teacher evaluation tool, which uh the superintendent, myself, and the NTA. Uh, we did last year to make it easier for the teachers while still, and the administration, while still meeting the state. Law regarding teacher evaluation. They were happy about that, I believe, and I was able to explain how it worked and who their evaluator was. And then we had common planning time, and that was one of the requests for teachers, and it makes sense, started the school year. Let's have some, let's have common planning time. K to two, talked about field trips, also about assessment a bit. Uh, three to five, talked about Veterans Day, and also talked about field trips. And then I was able to get this filter of information to Mr. Deloy, the president of the PTO, and get the ball rolling, so we can. Look at things out in the future and not do them, and so we can have the funding and the planning, the curriculum connections, those types of things. We all know that the more time you have before an event, the better it comes out. And then the last uh half, the last hour of the day was given so that teachers could complete their online trainings. Uh, that we usually have at the start of the school year, so that folks um had the ability to do that, or if they had already done it, they could do something else. And uh that concludes my report, if you have questions.
Yeah, just make a comment.
Sure.
Um, I wanna say that I think the open house was really well executed, I think it was. Um, very welcoming, and I love that. Other staff besides your child's teacher was available to speak to as well, I just thought it was very well done, so thank you.
Thank you for saying that, I appreciate it.
I wanted to um just add that I've never seen Galileo a whole more inspired to learn about. Current events than um after yesterday's trip to the fire department.
That's nice.
To commemorate. The effect, it's why I'm late tonight to the school committee, um real story, at dinner, we stopped talking. I wanted to look at information, you know, brought out my own educate, I'm like, oh my god, it's six fifty five. So um it was great to see him so inspired to have Ryan ask questions about Sierra. So I appreciate you all thinking or something, that is something.
Wonderful, I appreciate you sharing that.
So moving to home facilities.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm sorry, I, I was having a moment there. You may have seen online the story of uh nine eleven with a gentleman, Brian Sweeney. Who was a pilot who was on flight one seventy five. Uh, and uh. It's, it's, if you haven't seen it, it's, it's worth seeking it. That morning, I was the superintendent in DY and I got a phone call. And it was about that flight, and Mister Sweeney was on the flight, and. Mrs. Sweeney worked for me. And um. It was tragic, and yet um. It, it brought out the best in many of us at DY. And I had the great honor to speak at Mister Sweeney's um. Ceremony. It's, it's just an amazing story. Part of the story is online, the other part is that Mister Sweeney was a phenomenal football player. At University of Massachusetts. And he and his best friends, and they were both huge men, when I met them, I thought I was like a little boy. They called them the Twin Towers. So the story has many levels. So um that's, that's where I just was, and I apologize, but it's uh, it's just. It's just a great story. What's online is the message that he gave to his wife. Knowing, you know, he's a pilot, he knew what was going on, probably. Very, much more than anyone. So um, and of course, that's the airplane that crashed in the middle of nowhere, and it didn't crash in the middle of nowhere. Because of the terrorists, you can, you know, we can all imagine what was going on at work. So uh, let's move on. I already talked to you about the uh, the plumbing, and so I'm gonna switch gears here, and I'm gonna talk to you about supplies and materials, which uh in your. Um, survey, a couple of staff members had a comment about. We have gone, especially Mister Andrews, has gone out of his way to make sure. That every teacher has every supply and material that they need and want. One of the uh indicators for me, how we're doing, is a staff member who. Uh, hadn't been here before, uh had a conversation with me today, and I said. You know, you're getting what you want, and your comment was, I can't believe what you guys can. So uh, we, we're over that hump, so I just wanted you to know.
That's great, yeah.
And the staff update is simple, we're all in place, um. Yeah. Everything's working well.
And Tony, when you um, when you do these things, like um, you know, make sure the staff are either. That you order what they need or they're reimbursed, or however you do it, um are you also? And I, I think the same thing for some of these other um, the common planning time, these were requests in the survey. Are you naming them in your narrative with staff as? As you mentioned in the survey last year, or the feedback we got said this, so we have done this, just. Um, so you communicate out the changes you've made, so that nobody is confused about or misses. Where you actively strategically made change that has been requested by staff.
Probably not as, Madam Chair, through you, probably not as much as we could. But we haven't had a labor management meeting yet with the union, that will come up at that. And um, none of the staff has seemed to be anything but affirmative. So I think they're getting it, but.
I would say, it sounds to me like we're saying it every time we do something that's supportive of what is in the survey. I, I, I hear it. When we are at staff meetings or on our PD day, uh so I, I, I do say it.
Yeah, he'd be there, we definitely, I did, I definitely mentioned.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's a level one that you were, you know, it was a Monday, you weren't here, but um, you know, I mentioned, you know, how, how we're making these decisions.
Yeah, I just think, in my own experience, not as extensive as yours, Tony, but. Um, sometimes we do the thing, and then either you staff come on, you don't know where the thing came from. Don't know the thing's been done, right? Or you can forget, because we all do a million things as educators, right? And so you could forget, did that, did we do that, did we do that, you know, and I think. And also, I kind of sometimes say to my own leaders, like, take the win, right? And the win is for staff, in that staff have asked, staff have been empowered, you know, to ask for some things, and they got them. And you listened, and were able to make some dividends, take, everybody should take the win, and you staff coming on, you know, this is an environment. Where there's collaboration live, and we can make these happen, right? And so I just, I, I have. Not communicated sometimes, those things, and I've just moved on with my life. And to my own, to the peril of like, some miscommunication.
It's a great reminder.
Yeah.
Um, I can say that in our preschool uh workshops. I spent some time um with all of this staff, faculty and, and support staff. And talked about. Um, the concern that staff members didn't get a dollar amount to spend each year. Uh, when I went to the superintendent's convention. Uh, I actually spoke to about a dozen of my colleagues and said, you know, how do you do materials and supplies? And it was kind of broken out. A little bit more to, uh, we give a building a whole bunch of cachet. And then if they run out, we see if we can get more. Versus we give it to a staff member two hundred fifty dollars and blah, blah, blah. And the ones that give money to each staff member had an interesting second concept. And when it's gone, it's gone. And so I said to the staff members that day, I don't want to do that. First of all, if you go out and spend something yourself, if you go out and buy something. You're gonna pay tax, and then I can't pay the tax, so you're gonna get stuck for the tax. That's not fair to you, but my hands are tied, because I can't use public funds to pay taxes. Number two, if you go out and buy something, I'm probably going to be able to get it cheaper.
Bingo, that's what I was gonna say.
Because I'm buying, you're gonna buy one pack of stickies, and I'm buying a queso. And then secondly, or thirdly, rather, and this, I think, really rang true with the staff. The arbitrary figure of X may cover sixty percent of you. Some percent of ju- of you may not need that much, and somebody else may need more. I said, just ask for it, and I'll tell you when you're getting crazy.
Yeah.
And, and that, that rang true within the last two weeks, because a staff member who was new to us. Came into a room that had been used by someone else, obviously, and. They are very def- definitive about wh- what kinds of things they want. Uh, they would be way over Eddie Allotman already. For the school year, because we had to bring that person up to speed, you know, up to a minimum. So I think everybody is happy. Uh, Mister Andrews designed a, a bright yellow form. That you can't miss, and teachers are turning it in, and uh, you know, the form is good, because like, one staff member, um. I happened to get it instead of Mister, Mister Andrews, and I went through it, put a check on as we went through it. And there were several things that I went to the staff member and I said. You have to give me more information about this, because the last thing I want to do is spend money on something, and then you get it, and you go. Well, that's not what I wanted. So um, I think there were three, three things that staff member had asked for, and I said. You know, you, you need to give me information, a clear one, I'll, I'll tell you one. It's really obvious to me, but wasn't to staff members. Uh, I wanna uh, I want a bunch of stickies. Well, you know how many sizes they come in?
Yeah.
And colors, you know, do you want assorted, do you want green, do you want lime, you gotta tell me something here. And so, so that's the process we're going through, and it's been very positive, the staff has been very responsive.
That's great.
So moving on to the home business, of course.
Okay, Madam Chair, I want to tell you my code, because it's, you know, a little weird. So you have two policies that you are looking at under old business.
The second one.
For the second. Oh, I'm sorry, that's. These are second reading, I'm sorry, I missed that, I will change that, I apologize. I actually had an approval, too, I noticed. Sorry. When it's for approval, I'm putting the new policy first.
Right, yeah.
When it's a first reading, I'm putting the current policy first.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so that should help.
So we've already discussed the substitute and bullying policy during our last school committee meeting. So if no one has any changes, if I have a motion to approve such policies. I'll make a motion for approve, the two policy. G D G dash R, substitute K, the second meeting, and then the J I C F E bullying. Um, policy.
I'll second, I'm sure you're good, so, do I need a second to move them, or?
The, the motioner read the actual policy, so I believe that covers it. Typically, you would. Separate them, but.
I second the policy, the two policies, right, but.
I'm in favor of both files, please.
I, 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 I.
Motion carries, moving on to the long range meeting.
Madam Chair, whenever you would like to uh recognize me, I have a report on long range planning. Now, okay, so um. At the. End of last. School community meeting, member of the committee, we shall go nameless unless she chooses to identify herself. Came to me and made a suggestion that I, I um. Speak with uh Mister Ken Shundler, who um was known to me. Uh, as a resident here in town, and uh had been for eighteen years a member of. The uh school board, as it's called in New Jersey, in a community not unlike ours. Um, and Mister Shundler uh has given me permission to use his name this evening. So uh based on the recommendation, I spoke with him for quite an extensive period of time. He was the president, which is. The chair of our school committee is the president of their school board. Uh, many years, I believe it was twelve. And they are, uh, he lived in a community of approximately a thousand residents. Who had one section of K through eight. With a class size of approximately eight through fourteen, so they were really smaller than us, when you think about it. They, his school committee uh considered sending students to larger regional surrounding districts many times. And one year actually sent eighth graders to the regional school district, sound familiar?
I know, this is like creepily similar.
Uh, one, for one year, when they had a really small number, he said he thinks the number was five. Um, he gave me a pro and con, which I will hopefully share with you accurately. The pro for keeping um, uh, local, s- small school or small class sizes. All students are known to the administrations and staff and one another and the parents and guardians. Uh, it, it keeps students somewhat innocent, innocent for a longer period of time. It increases control of their of development and maturation. It avoids some bullying, older behaviors and activities, which he named, which I won't. Um, and he thought that small schools um were. One of the reasons that parents may have moved into the community with an expectation of a small school. And then in the middle of their children's education, if you change it. It may be um something they didn't want. Uh, like us, they had good academics. And noted that when the students from his, that school district moved on to the regional school district in high school. Uh, the students did very well with lots of students on the honor roll, high honor roll, and valedictorians and salutatorians. He also mentioned that small classes tend to avoid the cliques that you typically see develop in larger groups of students. Um, the negatives were more activities and a bigger environment. Um, more opportunities of a variety of nature, including social and athletic, et cetera. So his recommendation was to keep the pre-K. Uh, blend students when you have to, but make sure you're prepared to do so. He also noted emphatically that finances, in his research, like mine, finances were not an issue. He said, it's really interesting, because you think if you do away with a school, a small school in a local environment. You're saving your local taxpayers' money, but what you actually did. Was save money to the receiving district.
Yeah, right.
And that, of course, is never a goal, I mean, why would the, the hot school committee want to save another school committee money? I mean, you have your own issues. Um, he, he actually did a mathematical survey several times and an analysis. And he decided that it would save their district somewhere between three and five hundred dollars per student, per year. Which in no way was worth um losing this, this smallness.
To close the, can I clarify, to close the school?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Not just.
That is right, that would be to.
Yeah.
Send students off out of their district.
Yeah, but I think it's a fair assessment of something that we need to look at, too, you know, like what we did, our student cost, that would be.
Yeah, our, our per student cost in two thousand twenty one, which was the last audited, was within two hundred dollars of summer of, of. Of Swamp Scott.
Yeah.
And we were lower.
Yeah.
So we're in the right ballpark. So we're in the right ballpark. They also tried unsuccessfully to combine classes like we did. Uh, and he said that it was fine with everyone except the parents. He recommended something that I.
Passes the ban that I'm not doing.
Yes, yeah, he said there was a huge pushback. So my recommendations, which we've already begun, are to in. Increase after school activities and hopefully get almost one hundred percent participation. By our student population in after school activities. In October, we will start a three-session after school activity offering. One in uh, between October and the holidays, the uh, break, winter break. And then two after winter break. Uh, we will continue to work towards making our school unique. For example, Mr. Andrews has the charge for me. To um, communicate with Northeastern to make sure that we enhance our marine concepts and science and that. And uh, we need to investigate how our students are doing at at Swanscott Middle School and High School. At this point, a lot of what we have is anecdotal. Uh, you've heard of parents. Report during our discussion in the spring, how well our students are doing. We don't actually have the data. That I'm comfortable with. I do know that we have this a disproportionate number of valedictorians and salutatorians over the last decade. But I'm not sure that's. Indicative of the general quality as compared to the uniqueness of certain individual students. So we need to do a little better job and we will. So that's my report.
Thank you for following us.
That's very, very insightful, thank you. Thank you to him as well for.
Yeah, uh, one more thing, Madam Chair, he volunteered for our committee if you do in fact decide to have a community committee.
I wanted to talk a little bit more about this, I'm not sure now is the time in long range planning, probably is. But I, a few things that I think might be useful for us to be about. One is like. In this game, actually from Galileo too, so Galileo announced at the party the other day, he's like, well. He's in uh, fourth grade right now and he said, um, I said, you've got three years left, I'm gonna share at the Johnson's school. And he said, no, I have two years because now sixth grader is always going to the middle school, right? And then I corrected him and he argued, that's a different. And um, and so I said, where did you hear that? He said, well, that's what they're saying at school. Now they is always the kids, so. Um, so I just, so that was one thing. And then I have had a couple of people like I mentioned before. Um, approached me, you know, on the street, um, in a good way and just worry. One even voiced a concern about like, don't ever let the whole thing go, you know? And that's never been a conversation any more than Galileo, you know, going to the sixth grade at Swanscott, you know? So I just, I think out loud, I wanna get us to a point of saying what we are and what we defining what we are and aren't talking about in terms of short and long range planning. Because there has never been a conversation about any, with anybody that I know of here publicly or in private of us becoming a regional school. And I wanted to mention that after your story told me just because of that difference, right, in the story, even though. It's a great thematic story for us to listen to, um, from your colleague. The second I I just wanted to to lift is that, um, I do think. While this, the amount of sixth graders are current students and in that are from Swanscott is small. I do think like it having some vehicle for the kids and the parents. Like making sure at some point in time it makes sense in terms of. Giving them enough time to kind of reflect. It does make sense for us to get. Their each individual opinion um, about with some really good calibrated questions. That can get at some of our wonderings about how they're doing, right? What academically, socially, what's been hard? What hasn't been hard? What's a major win? What is a huge loss? Right? Those types of things. And I also wondered um, about asking, you know, talking about, it's hard to, I think commissioning a data study is hard. Um, because there's so many variables, but I do think it would be interesting to ask teachers in the middle school. Um, their thoughts, right? Not, you know, for a definitive statement, but just for some data to put into the mix. Um, about. From Swanscott, just because they teach non kids, right? And um, because. We have heard lots of different statements about it's better to start now, it's better to wait, right? And so I kind of am interested in. Their voice too in this, so primarily we're gonna be listening to folks in the heart period because it's our community. But it would help to like. Like if all the teachers say there's no difference, that's, that's important data, for example. And they may not say that, but they may say that. So I just don't like, what are the, I was asking myself, like, what are the key constituents? That I would wanna hear from. So first, parents, then kids, then community members, and then educators. And, um, and that was just sort of like some thinking that I, so I wanted to just place that.
I mean, I think feedback is really helpful, but like any opportunity to get actual, like, objective data is also really useful because. I, you know, without hard data, your mind just goes to maybe some outliers. That might not, like you were saying about the valedictorian, it might not be predictive of the larger group as a whole. So I mean, I think that they're all useful little bits of information, but, you know, I know. Um, you know, we've asked a couple of times about student performance and obviously much of the information is. Protected because it would be difficult to. For example, not that I'm asking for this, but if we were to want to know like how the sixth graders are doing academically over there. It'd be really hard with such a small data, so, so I'm not even sure how to go about doing that. And I, I totally appreciate your point that we need insight from all directions, how the students are doing here. And they're small group, how the students are doing in in Swanscott. It's just tough to get at those. Like more, I'm just a data person. And I love giving people's insights, but I data, you know, so if anybody has.
Yeah, the part two is the um, the investment of people, like what is your investment, what is your statement they need? You know, which can be a tough thing to 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 overcome. Like if I'm a teacher, I want more kids in my school or. You know, I I I don't know that personal opinion about a particular. Student, you know, I just don't know, everybody's gonna have opinion and their perspective on what should happen and I think without. The data, like that data on the finances. A- as much anonymous data as we can get for academic performance, just in our, on our own school and I think the only other thing. The other thing that we're 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 missing and I don't know that we can actually obtain is the social emotional, you know? Without just overall, how are the children doing here now, you know, so I think. You know, it's great to have information, but I, like I even think about myself to say. I don't know what's best for for these kids. Seems like they're doing great based on. What I'm seeing here financially, it makes more sense to do this. If if there's not anything happening in social, like there's nothing to say, one is better than the other. So I, personally, I think they're looking at two things, three if we can get. All the social emotions up and, you know, submit two things being. Performance, which I think sometimes if children are not succeeding academically. So sh- social emotional. Issues can be a part of that, so you know, those two things are tied together. And I also just wanna make another point about what this appearance obviously said the last time. And, you know, I repeat this myself in my own world of work is operationally. It's working, you know, so what do you, what do you look in the beam and change? You know, and I think the only thing. That we can gain is to is to get better. That's just my.
Operationally, what, what is?
So I, so basically, you know, we're a high performing school. And with the way that we were set up and, you know, and so. Why, why change something that works? And and I'm not to say that. I'm talking about now and and long term, like.
That's only academic based stuff.
But it, I I think that academic and the social is is tied in, I don't know how much.
I have no idea, but you know.
But and again, I think we're like kind of speaking for each other, repeating what you said, but like. Based on that, it's like we're well performing based on the data that we have for our school as a whole, and I'm assuming you mean the seventy-nine percentile. Right, but that to me is like academic. Right, and and then I think we decided to make the changes we did because we thought it would maybe be best for that whole group. Which is a very small group. Um, but I agree with you, I think that those three things are gonna be very telling and it's like, how do you, you know, do you just? Ask general questions to the five kids?
Madam Chair, if I may, um, I'm concerned on many levels about where we're going. That doesn't mean you can't do it. I'm gonna ask publicly that Mr. Andrews contact Mr. Calligan. And discuss how we figure this out. So for example.
How we figure out an assessment?
How we figure out how our kids are doing. Uh, and and I'm, my mind's all over the place, but I'll try to organize it. Number one, I have no authority to ask a Swanscott teacher anything. And so how would that go about? I mean, we just can't do that. Number two, I'm pretty sure we don't have the right to have their academic performance anymore. Because they're not my, our school, they're not under us. So, and the reason I think uh. Jason and Kevin can figure it out is, you know, we can have data organized. By them so that we only see bunches of it and we can't figure out who is. Everything's, everything's um, grouped. And we have to inform the parents before we do that. That we're doing it because if they don't want us to do it, they have the right to say no. So that's, I mean, we're talking about a lot of work here and and that's okay. I love the concept of investment in the game. That Michelle mentioned because that's always in the back of my mind when I ask. I I always think about something that I learned eons ago. When person A tells you about person B. They actually tell you more about person B than person A. And the way I learned it to use names, but I don't wanna get into that gender thing, so I changed it. And that's true. Of the thousand things I could have re- observed today. Why do I remember the ones I remember? And that's about me, it's not about what I observe. So when you ask somebody a question, you always have to think about the the con, you know, the context. And that's gonna be hard to figure out. So here's my bottom line. Number one, we know we're doing it well academically. Number two. With rare exceptions, I have not heard, and I know Mr. Andrews has not heard, maybe you have. A pair of of students who left our sixth grade or our fifth grade and have floundered at a middle, at the middle school in Swanscott. If anything, I hear uh, from parents, gee, kid loves it over there, they're doing great. Um, now, whether doing great means social, academic, athletic, I don't know. So again, it's back to the concept of if operationally, we've been. Pretty much on the, on target, what are we gonna change and why?
Can I, can I just add two more things? You know, with the, um. I'll I'll say that certainly there are some. Changes and challenges that come when you go from little school to bigger school academically and socially and. You know, just being a mom and talking with other parents. You know, I hear both sides, like the good and the bad and everything in between. But I don't know that that necessarily translates to that that would be any different if they went a year before or a year after. So that's one thing that just came to my mind. And then, you know, the other thing I would say is that I get questions several times a week. My own son included about what's gonna happen next year and I just keep telling people like we're being very transparent. It's gonna be on the, um, you know, it's gonna be on the agenda when we're focusing and talking about that. And um, and so come to meetings, you know, and I'm just really encouraging. You know, just and it's not even always necessarily fifth grade parents, like it's just people, oh, so what's gonna happen?
Yeah, yeah, even people that don't have kids at the school, so I just tell them, we're talking about it, it's on that, so.
So should we put it on the agenda in the future, just knowing that we should talk about it maybe in October?
With the guidelines, right, yeah, we have like certain checkpoints when we're gonna get cut them on the.
And, yeah. Refresh. I know we have.
I think it was October tenth.
October tenth, okay, that's what I thought.
I think that we're all on the same page that we're just trying, you know, we're trying to do what's best for our kids and I think. We want them to be happy, we want them to succeed and it's, it is like. Hard when you have such a small group, we want answers, but we also. We wanna be respectful and right of privacy, but we also want answers, but we also don't wanna like poke the bear if the bear is sleeping, like. You know, it's sort of like, I I think. I I was just thinking more about the questions. I think what Mr. Parent Hazi said in terms of having Mr. Andrews and Mr. Couch, I think makes sense, but. Like for me, I'm like, how do we get some answers without it having to be like so personal? You know, just very generalized questions and maybe, I don't know, it's like you wanna do the work and actually get the answers you're looking for, so.
We might not get.
No, I'm sorry, what I meant by that was like. When I think of generalized questions, I don't mean like having people give us the specifics of their like daily interactions. I just need more, uh, are you happy? Are you unhappy? Like just get a general, general like, almost like a, a temperature.
But then I know it's gonna be every, that saying, are you happy, are you not happy? I don't know if they went, like, if we were, if you were suggesting that the sixth graders. I don't know if that would have been different if they were in the se- gone in the seventh, in the fifth grade or the sixth grade.
Right, but because we made this big decision from a small group, a- and then it's like, what do you even do with it, right? If if. Depending on what they are, because the truth is, it's where are we? It's only been a couple of weeks. And it's and they, everybody needs time to adjust.
And I mean, in a year, but I I guess I do. I think I do just disagree on some of the points that I, um. Hey, let me clarify some things. A, I wasn't. I wasn't saying that, you know, I I understand the difficulty in the sample size. What I was talking about teachers and yes, we would have to, we have no jurisdiction, this is me wondering, would we ever get permission? Would it be okay to ask teachers in general, not about the sixth graders, but in general, do they ever wish that they had another year? And ask it in a way that we could try try it out, the ones that might be answering because we need more kids in our schools. I don't think every teacher would answer. They Machiavellian, I answered this way, it's because we need more kids. I, I know that's out there. We know that's out there, so we know we have to be wary of that. I also know information line is saying for saying when I'm looking for information. I want lots of data in different ways, from different sources and then if I am the decider. And we are in this, um, on this committee, um. Then we, if there's solace in the fact that we get to decide in whatever way we think is best, right? It's not like, well, you, you know, as a school superintendent, I have to make decisions based on the academic data, the parent data, the school, you know? And whereas here, it's different, this type of decision. So then that makes me crave different types of data. And whereas here, it's different, this type of decision, so then that makes me crave different types of data, so. That's why I, and to be honest, I've always been interested in that before this ever became a thing, and and so I'm scared because it's an educator. It is a a middle school starting in fifth grade or sixth grade is not that strange to me. But a middle school that's for two towns of students where one town starts two years after, does. Does those two years in an upper elementary and then goes in. And there's another group that starts at a different, at the same time, but in in a middle school. That is, I have not, I'm sure you've seen that before, but I have never seen that before in my travels. And um and so I've always had a question mark about who's getting the game there, and I honestly don't know the answer. My wife and I have gone round and round, and I will tell you my own opinion as an educator has changed. Since we first started these conversations, so you know, so I've been open and informed about this. Um I am wondering, so at the fifth grade, I no longer have one phrase about that, provided it, you know, everything that's worked for them. And um so. I, for me, some of that would be, would, I would get information that I would wanna consider from a general asking of teachers again. About the last arc of years, not about this particular year. On these students themselves, I, we did not have the benefit of ever, I've tried this before um. To make a decision about the sixth graders that are over there now. But we do now have that to talk about what this small fifth grade class is gonna do next year. And I think like, I know we can ask about academic data, but except for one area, we can ask parents. If they're willing to share their opinion about how their students have done academically, right? And again, their parents, right, not necessarily educators, one of them is, um at least, but I think asking them. You know, how do you think it's going, and so it's good with some good questions that we can get from people who have. Tried to elicit unbiased answers, right? We could get some sense of that from them and as well as the students themselves, and again. If that pile of data would just be another data for us to consider as we make a decision. About the current fifth grade, right, going to sixth grade, and then deciding whether or not we're gonna go down, you know, because our current fourth grade. Has a lot of kids, it's a different, you know, it's a totally different thing in terms of numbers, so. I imagine that we're gonna be probably at that point deciding, are we gonna go forward with anything more long term? Or say no, as we are investing in some learning, learning, right? So that that, hopefully that better explains kind of where I was at, so some of that is similar to the conversation, some of this feels different, you know, there.
So Madam Chair, a couple of several thoughts, uh number one. Um I totally agree, let's get a broad picture of students from Nahat. At Swansett Middle School and High School, not a unique, very tiny group, that's what I was thinking of. And probably didn't articulate it well. Because the current sixth grade at Swansett Middle School was in fact a unique group of students in a variety of ways. Something that came to mind as you all were eloquently speaking is. One of the things. That we are probably not thinking of as much as we should. Is that our students are going into a changing environment, not a static one. Swansett Middle School is not what it was two years ago. Or three years ago, they have gone very hard on a welcoming environment, the current administration has put a lot of effort into it. And um our juniors and seniors in high school went into a very different Swansett Middle School. That it is now, it just, I don't know what that means, it just popped into my head, because we're we're talking as if it's kind of. A place, and it's not a place, it's a, it's a, it's organic, it changes. Perhaps it would be helpful if the school committee expressed a default position eventual. If nothing changes, we will do this. I'm just thinking out loud, you may not wanna do. But we've always been a a pre K six, we're gonna be a pre K six unless. So that people know what your default is. It's just a thought, a random thought. No matter when the Nahat students go to Swansett, they're gonna be a unique entry point. Because all their kids are going to be together from kindergarten when the new school opens. It's not a factor.
Yeah, that's a good point.
It's not a factor, it doesn't matter if they go in fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade or seventh grade. They're gonna be coming into a school where everybody's been together for years.
Another perspective I heard was that it was like such a fun thing for both schools to merge. You know, like to go.
Have the new bees come.
Have the new bees come, yeah, and like see new people and it's like an exciting thing too, so.
Again, I just thought of that when you were talking, so wait a minute. The the choice in merging is a temporary one. Right, am I, am I correct?
To that elementary.
Because that's an excellent point, Madam Chair, for two reasons, one, I believe they're gonna have the room. In the new elementary school, number two, they're gonna be renovating middle school and they, if they renovate smaller. It'll be a lot cheaper. So um.
Estimated to be there next fall, is the. School, the new school, that right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that was the original target.
Yeah. Then I have a story, because it's fascinating. When you've lived as long as I have, you've always had stories, I was speaking to a parent who had multiple children. And they moved. Um and their children started in a new school. One of their children was quiet, unhappy, miserable for. Particularly a long period of time, the others' children were happy and gregarious and outgoing for almost forever. So they moved, they entered the new new school. And I was talking to this this parent and they said to me. I didn't know, I just thought I knew. The quiet, unhappy group, one who had few friends. Leap forward into this new environment and now has friends unlike this student ever had before in the school they grew up in. Whereas the gregarious ones are not happy, they're quiet and they're having difficult times making friends. So it's, it just reminded me of the old adage that we don't know, we just think we know, right? It was just, and it was per- it literally happened within the last week of my conversation with this person. And and they said to me, go further and um. It's kind of amazing.
Really is not, but we're going to have to start really making a decision.
I like what you said about some default, I think that's where I started and that I think there are some things now, no, we are not gonna do, and I think. As as soon as we can sort of align and message those, it might, you know, there might be some anxiety that we could, well, I think. Um that might be a good thing. Well, I would even go, like, we're not, we're not becoming a new school, like I've had people ask that, so no, that's not. Um I think if if we know, you know, we didn't send, you know, we didn't um send the fifth grade this year, and so. We're gonna look at how that worked out, but it's looking good, I think, from what we've seen so far, so I think we're getting close to being able to say that as well. Um barring anything that we can see, so yeah, I do think those types of things, so then it also helps move in on what we do actually need to take. To take up at this meeting and also give parents. Um and community members plenty of time, like we've been saying out in the world, to like come to meetings and give comment, right? And that'll also help us gauge like when and if we need to have some kind of a pub- more public forum where there's a discussion.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Because other than returning to a pre K six, which everyone. Knew of, expected, historically experienced, it would be a a broad community decision. You know, obviously led by you. But um you know, you'd be changing the nature of the community and um. A not insignificant way, you know, it's interesting, if you chose that that way. For one more year, it'd be a little tiny group of kids. But then the year after that, bang.
Right, exactly.
You're talking about a huge, you know. Yeah.
And yeah, I think, yeah.
And a lot of our reasons for making the move are not true for the current fourth graders.
That's right.
Right, so there's.
Or perhaps even the current fifth grade.
Right, well, I'm thinking the current fourth grade, and again, fourth grade, we don't know what's gonna happen in a couple years, or even a year. Right, it's, they're half boys and half girls, just about, I think. They um and there's a lot of them, they only one that I know have started the charter school this year. And um. You know, I I uh I think, you know, that's, those are all different than some of the trajectory that we saw in two prior classes, so. Then, then are, then if we did something there, there would have to be some different reasoning, which is why I kind of. Was thinking about those other data points, because I think those are going to help either make that a discussion or. Or it's not gonna be a discussion, you know?
So how do we get those data sets? Do we wanna have like a community wide discussion over questions you can see, have more? The re-envision of. My fear with the community discussion is I don't want people to think that they are bored when. We don't go with what they have said, because again, you know, I, you know, part of our. Function here is to hear community correspondence, but this is such a perspective to me, in my opinion, that. People can have different ones and, you know, when you talk to students, they could be having a really bad day, I hate middle school, I hate this, I hate that. Next day. You know, that's where, that's where I'm data driven because that to me is.
Madam Chair, I. A thought for your consideration as committee is. Should the decision, should the intentions of the school committee be set. Prior to that community discussion. Because that's typically how a hearing is done. Typically, it doesn't matter if it's federal, international, or small. An intention. Is stated and then give us your input. Very rarely does, is a a general input sought on an open ended question, because what happens is. You you get so many different things, now, you may choose to go that way, that's totally your decision, it it's just. It may focus that conversation with the community if. The school committee's intention was. X.
Can I, can I make sure I understand you, so if we get to a point where we say, all right, are, by intention you mean plan? Or what the direction we're moving in, so our direction is that, you know, things are going well and we're gonna keep. The sixth graders here, and then you hear feedback from the community about that plan?
Yes.
How is that different though than what Michelle was pointing out, that then if a bunch of people come and say that they don't agree with that? How 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 is that, and then and then you don't change your plan, like what? I'm just trying to understand the process of like, what's the point of listening?
Ev- every public meeting I have ever taken part in, whether it be a financial one or a new school or something. Prior to the public meeting, there is a goal, an intention, a plan, a tentative arrangement. Uh a budget, a tentative budget, you don't. Go with with a blank sheet of paper and say, okay, we have no idea what we're gonna do, tell me what you want. Because it's all, it, then it gets harder to make a decision than easier.
But I think the situation is different than both of those scenarios, because we're not a blank slate.
Right, I was just.
And we're also, I would not open up any community forum if we are gonna keep the sixth grade here long term, that is the status quo. We moved some kids last year in May this year, May, 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 don't know May. Um and depending on the environment, our research, et cetera. If that makes sense because of a small class size, social emotionless of a small class size, et cetera, right? Um I think in the, for me. If there, if we are wondering whether. There is a world where the sixth grade, it may be better for to make a longer term for the sixth grade, then it doesn't make sense to talk about this year. And then raise the whole thing again and talk about the future, right? And if there's no temperature for this, and we do wanna do it on a year by your basis, based on class size. Then I kind of think we just need to do that, right? And we're waiting until we can get some data, right, I think the only time that we need a public forum. To have discussion is if we're gonna make a very big change to Swansett, which would be sending the sixth grade permanently over to Swansett. And we don't even know if we can do that, right? So we're not, that's the only place I could see us getting, having like a public forum about this.
I agree with you, I I was sitting there thinking, if if. If together as a committee, we evaluate the things that we wanna look at and if determined by vote that. What what the temperature is to take them or not, or to to permanently move or not, and if it's gonna be that we. Vote to keep the sixth grade here, then why would we need a discussion?
So personally for me, I do not feel that it should absolutely be that they stay here. For me, so this this was something that I had been thinking, like I told you guys, this is something I've been thinking about for a long time. And I think that the class size sparked us to do it, however we landed there, we landed there, but I I personally wouldn't feel. Comfortable and happy, just assuming that it's a given, that it's always gonna stay that way. Without investigating how it's going this year and looking more into it as a as a committee.
Definitely, as a committee, yes, yes.
Not if, so as a committee.
As a committee, no, I'm not saying in public forum.
As a committee, if we look into that information and determine that. By vote.
Whatever decision we have agreed, yes.
We're not gonna change, then I don't know that we need to have.
Everybody else, yes, yes, okay, so I think we're all saying same thing, yes, okay.
In pro- in terms of process, yes.
But here's my, for this.
Right, six, yeah.
We want to treat the same way that we did last year's. Grade six in terms of feedback from the families that are. Well, we didn't ask.
We didn't ask.
The same thing that. But again, to my point like. This is all perspective and so. For these families, if you have a two or three, you know, or you you know, like what.
Oh, are you saying like, I guess what I'm saying feedback, I'm saying, and put out earlier, that we're gonna talk about this, and let them come to the meetings and give them this. Yes, that's all I'm saying, that's, yes, yeah. Is that what you're trying to say, like, we we have been clear about our planning. We have a plan in terms of when we're gonna discuss what, we have deadlines that we're gonna work for.
And if and I've requested that we look at potentially some other data.
And our hope is that, of course, at any time, if families were want to join and have a dis-. And have their community, but it would be at that time, yes, ah yes, I agree with that, yes, yes. And yeah, and this is, I think, why we're really trying to.
Put it down, yeah. Although we have returned to seeing in the meeting that we're gonna be discussing a lot of things and that would be there. Opportunity to come in and 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 other trends after that, to to offer their perspective and and all of that and. I guess I'm not saying I'm not interested in their perspective, but also that, you know, decision making has to.
I mean. Of course, I mean, here it's.
On our plan, like December ninth, decision on rising sixth grade class.
Right, but earlier, you know. Right, but earlier, you know, top two again, like. Offer your input on your perspective, we will be discussing them at this.
Yes, yes.
Um, couple things, while we were meeting, I did check, and the agenda is on the Johnson, it's always on the Johnson School website. So if people are wondering, like, is this gonna be discussed, you can tell them that our agenda is always posted. Um, and I double-checked it.
I know the town looks like.
For when Gina's with October ten. For every meeting.
Oh, 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 oh.
Our agenda is always posted, so people know that we're gonna be.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
But just one, one thing, and it kinda came up at the end of last meeting. So, um, I think there's like kind of three potential possibilities. Because at the beginning of the year, when I was making together this timeline, I was under the impression, and I think this is what you're saying that, is that. Like, we're gonna make a decision for this rising sixth grade class, and it'll fuel us to. And provide us with the information to make a decision about long-term planning, but I think that what we discussed is that. They're different, because the class still is very small, and we may not be ready to.
And. Yes.
You know, really, you know, close the conversation about long-term planning, because it's such a huge decision. So one possibility is everything stays the same for both this next year and then in the future, but we might not know that. By middle or even at the end of this year, and another possibility is, you know, the, the, that the. Next year's sixth grade class goes, but long-term, we actually say K through six, and then. Last possibility is the students stay, but ultimately with bigger conversations, with decisions made in the future. Because I think we all decided that we might not be ready to make those decisions together.
One, you're absolutely right.
We are not. We have so much.
You're just.
I mean, with super.
Yeah.
Focused on like long-term.
But I wanna, I do remember that conversation, I, I. We, and that's important, but when, in, in FY twenty four, which is this year. We're gonna be deciding about the FY twenty five sixth grade, right, this, this small fifth grade, right?
Yes.
In FY twenty five, which is next year, while that sixth grade is potentially at Swanscott Middle School, right? We possibly, potentially, we, uh, then could decide about the long-term, either way, right? But I don't think, I see, it does not be, to be honest point, it, it doesn't make sense to then. Bring the sixth grade back here and then further down the line, talk about, um, long-term implications, I think that. This is bringing up our consideration now, right? And so we could decide the long-term decision next year. Yes, right, but I wouldn't, I think it either, we make the decision next year or we don't. We, we, we make the decision to. Change this, have a community forum, long-term sixth grade goes to Swanscott. Or we make the decision to not do that, keep the sixth grade here, and we want that.
Yes, yeah, I, I think so too.
And I think.
And, and that's a lot of the orders we're not done, I mean, that's putting a lot of the work on us, but I, but I think we've all been.
Yeah. Yes.
We're all gonna have been so thoroughly, yes, yes, yes.
But we're in it. I mean, I wanted to decide on this.
And I'm not, that doesn't make sense, but.
Remember she said.
No.
She wanted to decide on this while we were here.
Okay.
I know, I know, okay.
So, yeah.
So moving on to superintendent.
Search. But it's like to be out of here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, that, uh, members of the committee, uh, in your packet labeled seven D is my humble attempt. At a resignation letter.
It was a lovely.
Thank you.
Worst part of my day. I didn't, I didn't read it.
It's very lovely.
Oh. Do you want me to read it into the record, or?
Yes, please.
Okay. So it's dated today, dear Chair Karis and members of the Nahad School Committee. Please accept this correspondence as a notice to resign for the purpose of retirement again, but no. From the position of part-time superintendent of the Nahad Public Schools, effective June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you, and those members of the Nahad School Committee who preceded you for this wonderful opportunity. It has been a pleasure to work with and for you. This position has provided me with the opportunity to work with so many wonderful people, all focused on providing the youth of Nahad the quality education. While also addressing their social, emotional, and physical needs. The Johnson Elementary School staff members have been and continue to be excellent. The staff members are the artists of our business. They are always ready to pitch in, to solve a problem, help a student or family, and suggest an improvement. They have provided outstanding support for our work. The two administrators and assistants who work with me represent the best of our business. The officials of the town of Nahad have been and are supportive, communicative, and easy to work with. The parents and guardians and all community members are supportive of the Johnson Elementary School, and of course, the students and staff. Be better if I could spell the word Johnson. Uh, I will always be grateful for the opportunity provided by the Nahad School Committee to work in and become familiar with the town of Nahad. The Johnson Elementary School, and most of all, the people who live and work in Nahad. Working here has and continues to be a pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
So moving on to the superintendent search process, I'm wondering, maybe we have an opportunity to have a webinar themselves last Friday.
No, no, I'm wondering, so I'm.
Okay, I read your slide. I also find both of the quarters.
I, I requested.
Okay, awesome.
So, um.
Did you attend with the five minutes?
I did. So. There's a lot of work to be done, what I, it was very well done, and MASC did a very, very good job. It was very intense, and I left freaking out in that webinar, like, oh my god, we've gotta move, we've gotta move. So there are five. Work backwards in terms of your timeline.
Yeah.
So we want superintendent to face July one. We have to have an agreement in place ninety days prior. Okay, contract, so that puts us into an offer extended in March. So, that's what I got out of that.
Six months from now.
Six months from now.
Yeah.
And there are five cases that they are on, and I really think if. Help us.
Yeah, I thought that that was the plan, we're gonna look. To them.
To help us. So I know we've given a few proposals out there, but after what I heard. Probably serve us the best. But I don't know what that.
Sure, um. I have shared with the Chair a, a packet of information from the MASC executive search process. And, uh, I can copy this again and send it to you all.
I have the copy from. I guess.
So there's, this brochure, I believe, did I send it to all of you? No?
I, I thought it was.
Oh, you may have gotten it at a workshop.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's basically two things. One is, uh. Administrative support. And that would be that if the school committee chose to do. Its own interviews. And its own screening. They would, uh, MASC would help you, um, design an advertisement. Um. And, uh, give you a technical support. There would be no cost to you.
Technical support and.
Uh, something popped up, you wanted, uh, the school committee wanted to know, um. The process. Be concrete, give you a concrete example. Which of your interviews could be an executive section and which had to be public?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a technical question.
Okay.
They would.
Do we interview publicly here?
Here's.
Like, like the town assistant, when they did the TA interview.
Well, I can give you technical assistance right now, your first round can be an executive session after your first round. So let's say you had ten applicants, you chose to interview five. The first time you interview, that could be executive, you whittle it down to three, that has to be public. My interview with Nahad was public.
Do people go?
Most of our meetings, we help them, it's very intuitive.
Yes. It was a town, it was a town hall.
And that's always like after, I mean. Like.
No, it's a separate meeting.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, well, it can be, yeah, okay, I'm like, this is not gonna work.
Are you saying, yeah, so they do the, they do an advertisement for the position?
Or. You, we. My office would do the advertisement for you.
Okay.
Chris would do it, or you could hire them.
Yeah.
To do the search.
Yeah.
And in that case, they come in, they, they write the ad, they put the ad in the paper, they go through the paper, uh, review initially. Uh, they actually have an individual who would be, um, at the interviews with you, hurting people in and out. Um. And I don't know if we have that cost, or they're going to.
I don't think we have that.
I don't believe so.
And that's where, I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um.
I think we need help.
Yes.
Exactly, I mean, I know that you. Like.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean.
I have a lot of experience of this, and we need help.
Oh, okay.
And white bloods.
Yes, so exactly, we need help, and I interview.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So I, yeah.
So I'm not worried about.
I don't know, that's what's my all of the.
Things, I'm like.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair. I apologize, on June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, I did get a quote.
Oh, oh.
We tried.
Ten thousand five hundred dollars.
Oh, he, he told us.
Yes, you needed, bye.
Let's do it.
I, I mean, I, I think we have the budget to do that. Do we have the budget?
That's my job. If that's what you wanna do.
Yeah. Yes.
Do we have the budget to do it?
Do we find?
I'll find, yes.
Yeah.
Good.
Short answer, yes.
Okay, thank you.
No, we, we need some assistance.
We do, yeah.
In terms of keeping us on track, this is a five-phase process.
And we're all volunteers, like, we gotta.
Right, yeah, we all have other very stressful.
So Madam Chair, do you mark?
Jobs, local jobs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I can.
You have his email. I have it, I'll, I'll. I'll send it to you, no problem. Um, and you're getting it nice and early? Well.
I don't know if they are.
Early, early for, uh, July first, two thousand twenty-four, but the insanity that's been happening around us. Uh, uh, the marble head interim superintendent was posted today.
Oh.
Um, and there are at least ten. Superintendencies in Eastern Massachusetts that have been vacated within the last. Six months.
Any pipeline.
No. Um. Also, Madam Chair, with your permission, I'd be happy to communicate with, uh, the Executive Director of MASSS. And simply say, you know, pipeline, if you know of anything, let's throw it our way.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
It is a unique position.
Yeah.
Yes, unique.
Oh, what?
Oh.
It is a really unique position.
But. And if you'd like me to negotiate with Glenn for about ten-five, I could probably get it down a little.
So we know you're sorry.
Well, you know.
Like, I know.
I'm really good at that.
Because we're so small, but it just, we really wanna do this right.
Yes, yeah, it is.
But we didn't get the white glove for eight thousand, let's get it for eight thousand, right?
I agree with that.
Absolutely.
And the only other question I had too, just because it's my first go-around with, with the town position, is, is our, um, town administrator. Town hall involved in any way, is it really our, our view?
Let me, uh, you know, we said, I took. Oh, we should set up the.
Okay, the search committee.
Within our committee?
No.
Oh, so the search committee, we can have. Up to, we can have a form of school committee. I think we can have up to. Just that be two of us. Um, and then we can write. How the numbers from the committee.
Great.
Good, great.
And I think we should.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. That's smart.
Yeah, that would be fantastic.
Yes, because shouldn't all be us?
No.
And it also like is very good to include this guy.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Absolutely, and actually, I have some. One, I would like to jump to. Um.
How many committee members can there be?
So on, on.
No, no, not ours, it's like.
For this committee.
Oh, so nine to thirteen. Which is, you know, I would say probably our majors.
Yes.
So we would want, you know, the smaller side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could be so bold as to not get involved with my own.
Yeah, yes.
I, I can, I would consider if I were the Chair of the School Committee. Speaking with Glenn or one of the other field reps. About every level of decision.
Of course.
Prior to even talking about it with, with your colleagues, so for example. Some people think it's not a good idea to put. Staff members on the search committee.
Of, of the current staff.
I, I agree.
Yes.
Others.
I think probably.
Yeah, others think it's.
Retired.
Yeah. It's not a bad idea. So you, you know, you get there, and that changes, you know, um.
Interesting, do you? I do too, I really think we should.
The only reason that I could say that, that I would be in agreement is that, for whatever reason, a staff member didn't select the candidate that you selected, then there's this sort of. I don't know. Unapproval of that person initially, and that person ultimately.
Oh, what does the school committee like make some selections and then have this other committee sort of? I don't know, I think this is a.
It is only the search committee that hires the person that.
That's, that's why I think your first conversation.
Oh, so, okay.
Yes, of course.
It, it actually is the other way around, the selec- the selection committee would select a number, never one.
Right.
Right, yeah.
And then you would.
We select the.
And you make the final determination.
That's why I think it's safe to have.
Okay, oh, okay, then.
I mean, when we search for a major role. Um, in a school, I mean, this is a superintendent search, but, um, everyone gets to weigh in. None of them make the decision, though, I don't.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the things I would do as a superintendent, when I had, you know, a interview team of, uh, twenty people. And it is different, because the superintendent is the only person in this school district or any school district who works directly for you.
Okay, right.
Everyone else would work for the superintendent.
Right.
So, we had an actual printed statement. That this committee will be recommending to the superintendent. A number of applicants that meet this committee's minimum requirements for doing a successful job. And then the number would be two, three, four, whatever, typically, no, no, no more than four. The second part of that statement would be, um. And then this was always given by the Director of Personnel. The, uh, the Director of Personnel would like to remind you that the ultimate decision about hiring is. The authority of the superintendent of schools and only the superintendent of schools. And your recommendation is expected to be a number of individuals who, if the superintendent chose that person. You believe that you. Could live with that decision. I mean, it wasn't lived with. But in some way frame it so that they understand they're not making the decision. Because oftentimes. Well, whoever, whoever is on that committee. Is rarely unanimous, so if somebody's gonna get hired, that somebody on that committee doesn't like.
Or wasn't their first choice.
Yeah.
I know, I guess just to my point was, if it's a staff member, to me, that's more, um. Important to them.
Yeah.
Than somebody who doesn't.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, but let's do it this way. In the scheme of the organizational structure of a school, district, or a school as small as ours. The superintendent. Has more. Important interaction with the town manager, the police chief, and the fire chief, than, than line staff. Who the principal really has the interaction.
Right, right. Yep. I guess I'm just so used to you being.
Really.
Around.
Okay, okay.
But I think you're very hands-on in it with the.
You know, it's a best, right?
You're tough at all.
But one, one thing that we should do, though, as, you know, we go back home and think between now and then, that we should start. But one, one thing that we should do though, as you know, we go back home and think between now and then, that we should start. I thought that little.
Maybe it was sorry.
Is it like a lot of other bug?
No, I.
Same one. Matt, take care of it.
It's sort of croc- it's a crocodile.
They come. Well.
They're like. Flat.
I don't know.
Sorry for um deflecting there. We should really start thinking about. The expectations, the success, success factors of what we envision with superintendent.
Um, so you sent those slides and, and all of the things that you described are listed in phase one.
Yeah.
Um, and then I was wondering if there was um involved your job description, Tony?
I have asked.
Okay, um, that would be helpful, I think, and this way we can.
I sent several to the Chair.
Okay, great.
Yeah, Tony doesn't have.
Okay. So I think, yeah, we would just have to do a little bit on mark for phase one.
Yeah, uh, if I may again, Glenn has the field.
I know, I can't wait to meet them.
He's been doing it a long.
He's been around forever.
Yeah.
I think he will help us tremendously.
Yes.
So do we need?
Or he may in fact um delegated to one of the other field reps, all of whom. Uh, I've known Mr. Hardy for twenty-five years and uh other people who work now for them, um. One has been the uh. School, the MASC school committee member of the year. Um, past years, so all very, very highly skilled and very knowledgeable people. And they do, they do it regularly, you know, so they're.
Does he know a lot about, uh, just, have you talked about our school committee in the hall?
No.
No, no, that, that, that's.
Not my, not my job, man.
Yeah. Do we need to take a vote to? Are you taking care of the contract stuff with MASC or that would be sad? Okay, so then, do we need to vote to allow you to, or need to?
I would recommend that the Chair speaks with Glenn and gets a number, so, so, so Glenn, that Tony thinks the number's too high for somebody as small.
Okay. Okay. Okay, alright.
So next. Has to negotiate.
The next meeting, we should have done our homework for phase one, with the job description, or maybe the next meeting after the next meeting, so that gives us two meetings.
And, and.
Let's, let's. Let me have a conversation with fun.
Okay.
But I would love it if we could actually talk to all of us in some shape or form, see if we can.
Okay.
And, and then I will.
Can we set up a Zoom at the next meeting then? Sure, yeah, set up a Zoom with Glenn at the next meeting.
Yeah, I would love that, so that everyone can get that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're down the line.
Okay, so that, you know, we can all say, okay, this is, yeah, I'm looking at this one, phase one, okay, this is.
A Zoom during our meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And then.
Cause you have.
I know, just making sure.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so let's look on the. Give them any more policies.
You should do.
I mean, I'm sorry.
So.
How did you spend your summer vacation?
Worth it. Uh, Mr. Panzotti, do we, this, do, do that we read them and just if anybody has any questions?
Um. Madam Chair, I'm flexible, um. Let me, give me a couple of sec, a couple of minutes on each one.
Okay.
Okay. The current non-discrimination policy, as you can tell, is different than the new draft file AC, which is non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. And uh, that has newer um. Legal definitions.
I have some, about, because there is some similar language, so the idea is that we won't actually have this first. They're not two separate policies, yeah, it's that the new policy would be the non-discrimination policy, including harassment.
No, they're not. That is correct. Whenever you have a current and new, and new, the new takes place of the current. So this brings the uh concept of discrimination policy uh consistent with mass general law and federal civil rights acts. And the Acts of two thousand twenty-two, you're gonna see that a lot. The, in two thousand twenty-two, the legislature uh passed a lot of new laws, that we have to come into um. Concept of consistency with. So this is one of those that if you wanna change some of the grammar, you wanna change the, 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 fine, but I wouldn't change very much of it. Okay? So that's AC.
Sorry, but with the, with the, um, how it says new draft. Um. Were giving me feedback on how it's worded?
If you want.
Okay.
Sure.
The blanks are because we put them on?
Yep. Yes. The file AC dash R is new.
What's the difference between new, new draft?
Yeah, that's what I'm, meaning, meaning we've never had it before.
That is correct.
Okay.
But how is it different from file AC that says new draft?
Yeah, I have a question about that, that I already thought of this. It's not the same.
No, it's definitely not the same, but are they not, because they're both AC?
And they both are called non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation.
Right. Yes, yes, that's right.
Okay. So the um R means reference in my head, so this policy further defines AC.
Okay.
Uh, okay.
And we don't have it, so for example, this tells you what we're gonna do.
Okay.
We will promptly respond.
Right. Is the, can we rename it so it's more clear, or are the names set in stone?
They're set in stone.
Or?
This is the MASC policy naming.
So they're, so in the MASC, they're both being non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation, just one has an R?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, why is race on the new draft AC, why does race have an asterisk, it couldn't find a corresponding asterisk, it's playing mine?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Um, on the one that says new draft file AC, if second paragraph, second sentence, um, second line, it says race with an asterisk. First, and there's no like corresponding asterisks.
I have no idea.
Oh wait, no, there is under legal references.
Um.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's right there.
There it is. Race to include traits historically associated with race.
Yep.
Including an. That's random, that's, that's part of the two thousand twenty-two.
Oh.
Okay.
You're looking at ACR.
And then it's an ACR. What is the?
Oh, I don't have some of them.
So that's two of them.
No, I, Michelle, Michelle's looking at one that has that.
That has draft.
Draft.
New E C draft, but this one is. The new one, cause this is MASC.
Right. This is the one.
One in twenty-two. So I have one that doesn't have anything, it's just file ACR, the non-discrimination.
Yeah, I have that, yeah, yeah.
That's because we don't have that in our book.
Yeah.
It's further along than. You.
Oh, okay.
So this one, the new draft ECR is replacing. That ACR that we have. We do have it, if it's numbered. And.
Are you on B, Michelle?
She's on ACR, ACR, I don't think we have to call security.
Oh, security, that's right, yeah. So there's three that say non-discrimination policy, including harassment, okay.
Right, yeah.
Three of them.
So this is right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, but that's also a label case.
Yes.
Exactly.
Let's, let's do it by the letters, that might be easier.
So the.
AC.
What do you mean?
AC, AC we have, and there's a new draft.
Yeah. Okay.
AC dash R, there's a new draft you don't have. ACAB, we have, but it's now being retitled by the attorneys to sexual harassment.
So about how many policies are we ultimately gonna have out of our two drafts? Out of these ones that are in our packet right now, underneath this list, we're gonna have.
Four.
AC.
AC, ACR, ACAB.
AC. Really? We're still gonna have one that's called non-discrimination?
Yeah.
AC.
AC, right?
Yes.
This is the new draft.
But it's not called non-discrimination, it's still called non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation.
That's correct.
Okay, and then there's also ACR, which is.
The reference.
The detail for that one.
Yeah.
Then ACAB, which we call harassment currently, but which will be sexual harassment.
But what's the difference between this new eight C draft?
New draft.
And the ACR, what's the difference between these two, tell me?
ACR. Is in the language of the attorneys necessary?
Is it?
Because it goes into.
Um.
The detail of who is involved with certain things that AC doesn't do.
I think the speech draft is the one that you're supposed to be reviewing.
So ACR, for example, if you go to the second page of it.
Because.
It tells, it tells the people who, who have a, have an issue. Who they should go to.
Yes, I think that, I think the thing is, is that we just had the one with the.
Yeah.
Right.
And that, and then we had the one filled in with N P S.
Yeah.
Right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what.
Which was a good.
Yes.
So the ones that say new draft, but the ones that were.
The ones that say new draft, that is the new.
Yes, ones that were.
New, yeah. But then. But then, this one. Here is.
Use.
The one filled in.
Use, use letters?
Yes.
And the one, so the one that we're reviewing is ACR, the one that says new eight C draft.
Yes. And this is ACR, this is the thing.
Yeah, uh, well.
We, that has. I know.
Yes, it's the same thing.
Yes. Okay, but this is, where are you in this one? This one, okay, so this one needs to be updated, because this says MASC December twenty twenty-one, and this one is MASC August twenty twenty-two. I'll just show you Tony if you don't hide.
Yeah, I see.
Because that, that's. Okay. It's alright, we're gonna zoom into this this way, so.
She's so good at shows. I'm like.
These, what is, this one, and this one are the same.
It's also difficult.
But this one is.
They are so similar. And the, and the new ones are the. Um, and one post. And this is our first meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. However.
Oh, let's see, there's.
Let me review ACR, ACR. The, the ACR filled in, the ACR not filled in are the same.
Yes.
Yes.
Except.
Except it's obviously filled in.
Well, well, the bracket, the source on the last page, I guess.
Maybe.
Is different.
No, that has actually two thousand twenty-two. So they're the same.
That has a separate.
It's the reference on that one.
Yeah, I guess I just wanna make sure that they're referenced.
Yeah, I'll check, I'll check it out, but the, the one without.
But they're the same.
Nahant filled in, in my opinion, is the, the newest one.
Okay.
So not the one that says new EC, the one that's.
That says nothing, the one that has nothing.
File ACR.
Is the newest.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, but the, but the.
But I, I'll, I'll work on that in the interim.
No, ACR, okay.
Not the one that says new eight C draft.
Yes, because it should say blank P S, blank P S.
Yeah. Yeah, the one that's blank.
Alright, so do we?
AC is, the AC is the easy one.
Yes, yes. So.
Alright, now. The ACAB.
Yes.
That's the one. That the new draft is sexual harassment, and that one has new references and new language based on the law. My, my guess is, there had to be based on legislation, one that specifically says. Sexual harassment. Which is why the current one, which I just did with you, not long ago, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, two thousand twenty, needs to be changed again. Okay?
Yeah, and I, I think, um, did you just get the, the source on this ACAB on the new draft, August of December two thousand twenty-one? So I just wanna make sure that that's the right source. And not August two thousand twenty-two. Cause I know they were just all updated.
Yes, that's correct. Notice twenty-one's after twenty when you did this one.
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't change, in other words, any of these dates.
Yeah.
I got them right from MASC.
Okay.
So I didn't change them, so. And unfortunately, we may have to do some of this, you may have to do some of this again.
Okay.
But that's the third one.
Yeah.
Okay? Then the fourth one, I do wanna spend a little time on. This is the wellness policy.
Yeah.
So, um. This one. I tried. To make it clearer. By giving you the current one, four pages long, and then I actually typed this. No, I have no license, and I actually put an asterisk by hand on all the new language.
Okay.
Okay, so. Um. So, let me give you a history. Uh, last year of a wellness committee, which comprised of myself, Kevin. Uh, Riley Edmonds, our counselor, Roxanne, our food service director, Jessica Partnow, our physical education teacher, Joanna Deloitte, our consultant. On food matters and nutrition, and Cheryl Delicio met. Uh, some people came more often than others, but I kept everyone on the committee fully apprised of everything we did. Every time we had a meeting, I sent on a packet, said this is what we're gonna do, blah, blah, blah. So we took a, I think a seventeen-page-long document called Wells, Wellsat three point zero. And it's a national document, that you take a wellness policy and you search for, do you have everything you gotta have? And the Wellsat said three things, you gotta have it, it's good to have it, and really good policies have this. And we went to the really good policies. So if you take. Um. The asterisk. The asterisks, they are the language that we found in the really good policy.
Right.
Column. And uh these are eleven recommendations from that committee. Once again, uh I was the only person who attended, uh Riley, Cheryl, and I were the only three that went to all the committees. But everybody got this months ago, and and I communicated, look, read this, give me any of your input, and this is the the uh result. So on the first page, ensure we added, ensure that no student goes hungry while at school, all students will have a lunch at school. That's not required, interestingly enough, now that we have free and reduced lunch.
Yeah.
We we forecasted. Uh on page two, number seven, the application for free and reduced lunch will be included with the weekly lunch orders. I don't know, we doing that yet? I think we are, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Uh eight, school meals will include fresh foods, and if possible, it will be supplied by locally grown sustainable sources. Um we're having a lot of trouble with locally grown sustainable sources, but uh there's something fresh in almost every, usually it's uh carrots. Or uh peppers or um broccoli.
Broccoli, yeah.
We're heavy on broccoli.
Oh.
Sliced cucumbers, um page page, yeah.
Sliced cucumber.
Yeah, no, page page three has a lot of additions, seven of them, I think. All students will be scheduled for eighty minutes of health and physical education per week. We said every, in in the old policy, we didn't say eighty minutes. Uh the best policies delineate how many minutes, so we did it. Uh physical activity breaks are encouraged. The district promotes joint use agreements for community use of school facilities and school use of community facilities for school activities. We didn't have anything about that in our policy, I mean, we obviously do that, uh the P T O uses our building, people can rent our building. Uh all the community activities we have in our building are building issues for an emergency uh shelter. So we were doing it, but now we have it in our policy. School staff members are encouraged to to model healthy eating and physical activity. I have my step watch. Um. S uh health and nutrition education, uh students and staff will receive encouragement, support, and education to adopt and maintain healthy behaviors, et cetera, et cetera. Nutrition is integrated into health curriculum. Uh that last sentence on monitoring and evaluation, I think we just added the word public. I think it said the well, I think our old policy said the wellness policy is available on the website, and so we corrected it to the best language. And so that's what the eleven, the the eleven changes that the committee, the committee recommends that you give every consideration to.
Just had a couple of comments about uh the references to the programs that we're citing. And was wondering should we have another resources section for like the versions that we were looking at when the wellness. When this was adopted, only because if it changes, we should have a source. So the source points to go back and say this is the revision that we need most to make it fair and. Or are they so ever changing that it's not?
I don't believe the Wellsat three point O is a resource for the policy, I believe, if that's what you're asking.
No, I well, it's.
Okay, yeah, I misunderstood, I apologize.
It it wasn't that, it was the Massachusetts School Nutrition Standards for Competitive Foods, and then. Um adhere to exceed the U S D A small snack standards, and so I had looked those both up just to see what they were.
Oh.
And you know, one was revised in twenty two, and then the other one, I think, was twenty one. And so I was just thinking, it's, you know, as a point of reference for one year that you had, that you looked at this, and like, so if there's any standard to update, that may be something that, you know.
One year, yeah.
Like a reference point.
Okay.
With the source.
So I'll take those and I'll put those at the end with the dates, reference.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, got it. Uh just let me assure you that on an annual basis, we have to submit with our consultant. Fact that we are abiding by all of those standards, it's not like we do it in uh two thousand twenty and we don't have to do it again.
Yeah. Oh, so it's.
We have to submit that, as a matter of fact, we're doing it right now, we're in the process of submitting it.
Okay.
And that's crucial to us, because if we don't meet those standards, we don't get our reimbursement. So there's there's no wiggle room there.
Oh, that's. That's good, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't heard much about that baby, but yeah.
Okay, so we're done talking about policies now, the last one on whatever website we're on the agenda is the M C A S data.
Oh, I. I wanted to stay in for a second. Um so just I'll I'll keep it brief, cause I'm gonna have to talk to both of you, I'm gonna have the opportunity to talk to both of us again. Um I'll get you one right in a second there, Mr. Parentozzi.
Yeah, uh let me preface um the lack of more detail with. The results of the M C A S are embargoed until the nineteenth of September at noon.
Yeah.
So we're, we can talk in generalities.
Yeah.
Only until then.
Yeah.
And just to know, the embargo comes from the Commissioner of Education, and um. There's no wiggle room in that embargo, I mean, if somebody, if somebody had a newspaper um reporter talk to them before that embargo, the commissioner would. Really come down on that individual.
Right, but we we are allowed to talk to the, they they're changing a little bit, saying we can talk to our staff, we can talk to the school committee. Uh we can't. You know, we can't go very wide with it, and we're also gonna get more information.
Right.
Um so we don't have the state results yet, they're not out, we don't have growth.
Comparisons.
Yeah, so comparison districts, so that's all this, all the facts that make it more, you know, give you context. And so I can basically share this with you that, you know, we've in, we had a good uh rate of proficient advanced in E L A. Um I show you there what it the changes from the previous year. But again, we're talking about a different cohort of students, and both cohorts are very small. So comparing to the previous year isn't very helpful, because it's different kids, and it might only be, it's comparing, you know, thirty kids versus a different forty kids. So um. So this is where we are with E L A, um an improvement with math, a slight change, again, minus three percent. I don't think that's a real difference, um different students, small difference. Um science, last year, we had seventy five percent proficient, which was huge um that year. Um still strong in science, I see, um and our accountability percentile is still seventy nine. Um so that's very good. Um and we made good progress, uh they call it, our progress was substantial.
Um. So that the uh progress in relation to previous years or?
Yeah, I have to dig into that a little bit more, and I'll get you, I'll get you the um context for it, they have a two-page manual for administrators, seriously. Um and so it's not a percentile.
Okay.
You know, that sixty percent is it means. That you are doing good at making progress toward your goal. And then they have a whole point system to evaluate that.
Okay.
Um I put more info to come because we have lots of nice charts and information that's gonna fill it in, give you context, but I did mention. Over the summer, how they're working to get this out, information out sooner, so the teachers have it in their hands. Um in terms of results, it's been uploaded to our dashboard already, we've been meeting on the data, uh it used to come out in December. Um which wasn't as helpful as having it now, um and so more info to come.
Kevin, I would just, I would disagree about the the this form of comparison, because I do, it's different crew crew of kids, right?
Yeah.
But it's the same educational program, so like what you offered to fourth grade math last year was the same as what you offered prior, you know what I mean?
No.
That's true, I do think, um and I think it's important to kind of look at changes over time, I do think looking at just one year isn't as helpful as looking at like three years, right? Um I think the wrinkle that I always wonder about as a school administrator is like, what effect? Did the pandemic have in terms of learning loss, et cetera, that may lessen a lot, because we're one of the few districts that actually did do a full course of study. But I think if you showed us twenty one, two, and three, and then the plus or minus.
Mm-hmm.
Like overall, if you're going up in math, ten percentage points down isn't a big deal, right? If your end sum is going up. But if you went down for three years or down, up, down, that that is a different story, right?
Mm-hmm.
In terms of the telltale telltale, do you disagree, Tony?
I don't disagree. I hedge that. I I would say our numbers are so small, we'd have to look at more like five years.
Okay, yeah.
Because I'd like to go back to.
Yeah.
Some of the grades where we had larger numbers. Because when you have five kids taking a test.
Right, I was just gonna say that the only.
Twenty percent.
difference that is that a tiny class.
It's one kid.
Right, yeah.
So you have one, I mean, God forbid, we have one kid refuse to take the test, we're, you know, our numbers are in the bucket. I I just wanna remember, I just wanna remind you that S G P, the Student Growth Percentile, is the is the magic one.
Yeah.
Tony Parentozzi is in the third grade, he scored a sixty six. Whatever sixty six means, that's the other thing, the numbers do change. The next time he takes a test. In that same subject, he's compared to everybody who scored a sixty six in the state. That's the one that really shows how well we're doing. Uh with a five-year span of numbers, I mean, if we had, if we had three hundred kids in a grade.
And how much better. Yeah.
I think you're, I think you're dead on, three years would really give us a lot of information.
It's cool with the small.
But because we're, you know, we have, we had, in terms of pop student population, if you think about it, we were kind of like. And then boom, 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 and now we're coming back up.
Yeah.
So you gotta, I think you gotta stand that dip.
Okay. And to your point, that's just the spread look is just one, it's score, it's spread, and S G P is where.
Yeah, and cohort cohort analysis is great too, when you have the third graders, the same, our our school, the kids don't come and go a lot, they 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 come to the house, they stay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
So looking at those, look at their score, and so I'll have that for you too.
That's right.
Yes, correct, like continuity.
Um right, year after year.
And the item analysis, just so you know, our teachers get an item analysis.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's a really nice one with the date therefore.
So they they would really look at, look at this, look at this question, everybody got it wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah, super helpful.
You know.
Yeah.
If you had three hundred kids, it wouldn't be everybody, it would be, it would be, you know, like fifty percent got it wrong.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
But here you, I mean, we actually have some questions that nobody got, so it's clear to the teacher, hey, I didn't cover that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's really important.
Yeah.
And then we can use a little codes to match it with an I X L lesson, so.
Right.
Yes.
So that's a quick snapshot, you know, I just wanted to share it because.
Thank you.
You know, it it's it's um they're trying to get it out earlier, and they said, talk to your school committee about it, so. There you are with the with some context, but you'll have graphs and color and cons, more context next time, or hopefully by next time.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, we should.
We should.
Nineteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, that gives us seven.
Oh, I mean, as soon as they, as soon as we get it, I can get it right to you.
Okay.
It won't take any time to, I don't have to crunch it anymore, just something.
Right.
Thank you.
Sure.
So is there any other communities that have you like?
No.
Wow.
Are you down?
No.
I have a motion.
Leah, why are you making a motion? Sure.
Oh, that's not saying.
In prime thirties.
Next, yeah.
All in favor?
No, I'm not, I'm just. I was just so silly.
Wait, I love it. I love it.
It's that time of night, you just start being silly.
Oh, I wouldn't give it to me, it's classy, cause I thought that was your guest, like I thought you were.
Alright, maybe I'll. I'll show us.
Thank you, bye.
We're.
I'll I'll close up.
Oh.
Is it?
You want me to stop this stuff?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.